Good evening, calling this meeting to order. Councilmember from Ward 1?
Present.
Thank you, Councilmember Wade. Councilmember from Ward 2?
Present.
Councilmember from Ward 3?
Present.
Councilmember from Ward 4?
Present.
Councilmember from Ward 5? Is he online? All right, Councilmember from Ward 6?
Present.
All right, we’ll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Counsel, have you had a chance to review the agenda? Can I get a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Bryner. Is there a second? There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, please. Mayor, Counsel, if we can remove the ballot box line item, that would be great. I think the Board of Elections will be given an update in their report.
Is that number 10? Mr. Dick Galloway?
I’d like to amend my motion.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Bryner. How would you like to amend it?
I’d like to amend my motion to approve the agenda with the striking of item number 10.
All right. Motion, is there a second?
Yes, Mayor, I have a second.
Thank you, Councilmember Dallaker. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you. We now have the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from the town meeting on February 13th, February 27th, and the work session on the 27th. There is also the inclusion of the grant requests from the Mount Hope Commission. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Frye. Is there a second?
No.
Thank you, Councilmember Wade. Is there any discussion? In order to have a consent agenda, everyone must consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It’s a true consent agenda. Thank you so much. All right, we now have resident input. If you’re in person and you would like to share, please come up to the podium, state your name, your ward, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
I’m Anthony Thompson from Ward 6. I’ve lived in Chevrolet since 1978. I don’t get active very often, but I’m a former high school principal where I believed in and practiced transparency in my interactions with students, teachers, and parents. Therefore, I didn’t like when I found out that there has been a lack of transparency by the town council about a very important conflict of interest by one of the members. A full nine months ago, Prince George’s County Ethics Board found that Vice Mayor Frye had a conflict of interest because of her, number one, job as Chief of Staff for County Councilmember Ivy, and, two, her position as a council member for Chevrolet Ward 6. The Ethics Board’s exact words were, “She has created an appearance of impropriety which undermines the public trust.” The Board also ordered her to cease one of her, or one or more, of her employments to avoid the appearance of impropriety. What bothers me is not that she has hired a lawyer and appealed the decision, but that residents of Chevrolet, even residents of Ward 6, were never made aware of this issue. This is a lack of transparency, but even worse, it appears to undermine the Ward 6 election. By securing enough legal continuances, the Vice Mayor’s appeal will not be heard until May 21st, after the town’s elections on May 5th. The mayor and the town council should have been more upfront about this matter. I did hear, though, that the Vice Mayor said that she would voluntarily recuse herself when she thinks there’s a conflict. Recusing herself has been unfair to me and other Ward 6 constituents, and really, the whole town. Ward 6 has been and continues to be deprived of their voice on the important matters, including funding issues. I find this very troubling, and I expect better from our town elected officials. Last, I want to say, there needs to be a discussion on the matter by the town’s own Board of Ethics with full transparency for Chevrolet residents. It should be before May 5th election, so Ward 6 residents can make their choice based on facts. It is totally unacceptable that this has been kept from Chevrolet residents. Reasonable people might disagree with the ruling or the outcome of the appeal, but residents do need to know the facts.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone online? If you’re online, please raise your hand. If you’re in person, please come to the podium. There’s no timer for this. This is an update from our congressman.
I’ll be less than three minutes. I’ve been in your seat before. I appreciate brevity. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, for letting us come. A friend who doesn’t know, my name is Beth McKenzie. I’m a resident of Ward 6, and I’m also the District Director for Congressman Glenn Ivy. So I’m here today with my District Director hat on, here to bring a message from the congressman. This is something we like to do about twice a year, to check in, to let you all know what we’re up to, but also to solicit feedback and input. As everybody knows, you can’t open up your phone without seeing something happening in DC, so right now is a really challenging and troubling time, and I’m sure you’ve seen the congressman’s statements out about that, like, he is fighting for you, he is trying very hard to stop a lot of this bad stuff happening, but I really want to talk about what we’re actually doing. So, as you may know, he voted down the continuing resolution a few days ago. It is currently in the Senate, and so it is up to the members of the Senate to either vote it down, or amend it, or whatever’s going to happen, but the House did their part. We’re waiting now on our partner in the Senate. So we will see what that’s going to be like, but because of all of this, the congressman is hosting a town hall next Tuesday night, so that is March 18th at 6:30 PM down at Sutland Auditorium, and this is all going to be on our social media, and we’ll be putting it on our website as well. We really want to be able to hear from folks and let folks see the congressman and talk to him, and see what he’s doing and how he’s fighting for them. Additionally, we have heard from so many people that have lost jobs, that are about to lose jobs, that are very afraid, and so what we are doing is we are partnering with the Parks Department and Council Chair Ivy to do another job fair, and this will be on April 17th. This will be, I think, from noon until 6:00 down at the Equestrian Center, so we are hoping to get a lot of businesses there. We’re going to talk to the state, the county, a whole lot of different employers to come and try to bring some resources to our constituency, because we have almost 47,000 federal workers, and this is just workers, not contractors, in the 4th District of Maryland. So these cuts, these huge-scale cuts, are really going to be devastating, and I don’t actually need to say that to you all, because I see very many workers and retirees here. So what we do want to say is, if you’re having a problem, please go to our website, ivy.house.gov, and we have resources on the front page. It says, “Federal workers, click here,” and that is not just for federal workers, it’s also for immigrants and other people who may be impacted. If you are having a personal issue, we’ve been hearing about changes to Social Security, changes to the Veterans Benefits and everything, please call us. So go to ivy-house.gov, and our phone number is there. We have an online form, and all of that can be put on there as well. So, on to happier things. We do still want to make sure that we’re giving back to the community, and so every year in the spring, the congressman hosts a Congressional Art Competition. This is national, and it’s for any high schooler that lives in the district or goes to school in the district. We’d love for them to submit their 2D art, and then we can judge it, and then the winner goes and is in the Capitol for an entire year. We are also going to be hosting an event the end of July, early August, at the Green Belt Courthouse for all the winners, so please stay tuned on that front. And also, we will be doing Service Academy nominations again. We really want to make sure we get as many people from the 4th District into our different service academies, so go to our website for that information as well. And then finally, if you have any college students or high school graduates, we are looking for summer interns, so please send them to our website to fill out an application, and we would love to have them join us. So, thank you all so much. We are here, we are just over in Landover. Actually, we still have 20785 as our zip code these days, so we are very close by, and we would love to see folks and talk to folks, and, yeah, just please stay in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKenzie, and thank you Congressman Ivy for sending a representative. Is there someone online? Nope, all right. Please state your name, ward, three minutes.
Good evening. Leila Riazie, Ward 1. I’m coming to you, as I have in a couple of other previous meetings and work sessions, to really call for you to consider options other than trying to distribute additional ballot boxes throughout town. If we’re talking about trying to address issues of equity when it comes to access to voting and access to returning mail-in ballots, the best way, I will once again propose, is when somebody applies for an absentee ballot, that they are sent an addressed and stamped envelope. That extends across all wards. I have checked and have noted that there is one of those blue mailboxes available at Chevrolet Station in the part of Ward 1 that is split by 295, and then, not in the old 4th Ward, but in other parts of Ward 2 that are more distant. But if you are a single-family homeowner, you have the opportunity to put your mail-in ballot with the addressed envelope and the stamp, you know, out for your mail carrier to pick up, same as we have done for our county ballots, and also within Chevrolet Station Apartments. I spoke with the mail carrier, and they pick up mail at each location where people leave it, and also, some people drop it off at the rental office. The danger of a ballot box that is contained within a rental office is it actually does not address equity. It actually creates an environment where there are controlled access to that, meaning if you work until the hours, that site is closed, you don’t have access. If you feel uncomfortable entering either to a rental issue or other issues, it makes it less likely that you are going to step forward and access your right to vote. So with that, I strongly encourage, and if it requires a budget adjustment in order to support that equity, please consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone online? Okay.
Sheila Sallow, Ward 2. Today, I’m going to talk about English Ivy. Assume you know, but there you are. English Ivy has been widely used as an ornamental plant and ground cover. In fact, it is an aggressive invader that threatens our forests and open areas. It grows along the ground and into the forest canopy. Vines grow up the tree trunks and spread out into the branches. They block the sunlight from reaching the tree’s own leaves. Without that energy, the tree will die. The added weight of the vines also makes trees susceptible to blowing over during storms. Among the many benefits of a healthy forest is this: A healthy forest is the best form of stormwater management. Volunteer groups and individuals in Chevrolet have been working for many years on removing English Ivy and other invasive vines from our natural areas and our own yards. We will soon get help from a Clean Water Partnership project to remove invasive vines in the woods of Chevrolet East Park along Red Maple Run. The project organizers have recognized that forest preservation is among the recommendations of the Chevrolet Green Infrastructure Plan adopted by the town in 2011. Now, the Chevrolet Green Infrastructure Committee is identifying sites for an English Ivy removal project led by Member Paul Yocum. Plans are still in the early stages, but you can sign up for updates by dropping a line to chevfreethetrees@gmail.com. So that’s C-H-E-V, free the trees, all one word, at gmail.com. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone online? Any raised hands? Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia Mosley, Ward 2. Again, people may be tired of hearing me say it, but I regret that the rules are that we have to have citizen input before reports are made and not citizen input after each agenda item. So I’m here to talk about the election, and I have some serious concerns. Some were discussed in a very heated work session, the last work session. I have sent, as my husband has, a separate query to the election board. I have not heard back, it’s been almost two weeks, with some of these concerns. I am not finding fault with the good volunteers that are trying very hard, and I think we have a former election supervisor here in the audience, but I have major concerns about the ballot boxes. I’m anxious to hear the report tonight. I think they are unnecessary and difficult to maintain properly, both for the safety of the ballots cast, as well as fairness to other parts of town that are equally remote as the apartments are, that are not getting ballot boxes. I think there’ve been difficulties with the announcements of filing deadlines, and I think it would be much better if attention was given to broadcasting when these deadlines are. Having heard from Mr. Thompson tonight, I think Ward 6 has a very significant issue that there’s a filing deadline next Friday, and what Mr. Thompson brought to light tonight. So again, I respectfully ask that you reinstitute citizen input for each agenda item and keep them to three minutes. I’m not asking that you expand that, and I am asking that it be much more transparent how you are changing our election process here in town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else online? Resident input?
Fred Price, Ward 4. I’m looking for anyone who would enter the ring with Mike Tyson with one hand tied behind their back. It’s election season, and I would urge you to untie your hand from behind your back and support the best qualified candidate. Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else online? Okay, any other resident input in person? All right. Thank you. Well, with that, we’ll do the committee reports. Is there someone from the red council? Councilmember Wade?
As of now, I have no updates regarding the red council.
All right, thank you for that. Anyone online? Nope. Okay. Chevrolet Day Committee, or Councilmember Watson?
Hello, everyone. Just a reminder that Chevrolet Day continues to meet on the last Wednesday of every month. We do need more volunteers, so please let us know. This is not a parade year, because it is the 94th? Yes. So the parade will be next year, in 2026, when we celebrate 95 years. So we will have a regular Chevrolet Day on the first Saturday in October of 2025. Thank you.
Councilmember Wade?
Apologies. One update is the Easter, red council Easter egg hunt at Town Hall will be April 12th. The time is set, as of now, from 11:00 to 2:00 PM. Great event, my kids attend it, so please, everyone, come out to support that. I’ll provide more information as well.
Councilmember Wade, can you say that date one more time?
The date currently is April the 12th, from 11:00 to 2:00 PM, which is a Saturday.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anyone on from the planning board? Councilmember Bryner?
Yes, the planning board met last week. Thank you to Acting Chair Joyce Sepas for chairing the meeting. It’s Planning Boards’ Time to Shine, because the developers for Hospital Hill have either recently or are about to formally submit the preliminary plan of subdivision for that development. So if you have an interest in being super-involved in giving feedback on that preliminary plan, if you have an interest in local development and zoning and things like that, please join the planning board, talk to your council member about the process for that. But for the next month and a half, the planning board will be focused on reviewing the preliminary plan of subdivision and providing recommendations to council.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Bryner. Can you restate your name?
Yes, my name is Anne Claire Frank Cissé, the newest Board of Elections Supervisor. Robin Kay, our Chair, wasn’t able to come, so I’m bringing her notes. A couple of activities after Board of Elections. We have actively been looking at the visibility of the request of several council members regarding better facilitation of mail-in ballot collections for certain parts of the town of Chevrolet, in order to provide more equity in this regard. This has included exploring a variety of options for physical ballot boxes and/or providing postage on return envelopes for mail-in ballots. The official discussion and voting on this topic will take place on the next public meeting on March 21st. I think that’s 5:30 PM. Voter registration events, we have been looking at different events, existing events to hold a voter registration table. Right now, we’re looking at April 26th, when there will be the Town Dumpster Event and also candidate forum. So we’re planning to be there a big part of the day. Then, award boundaries, we’re updating our documentation, including the street-bout award lookup table and color-coded award map in accordance with the changes that have been made to the award boundaries from 2024. Also, we’re updating documentation regarding award boundaries to send to the county. Then, we’re looking on, working on flyers to start actively promoting mail-in voting with QR codes to the PDF forms and online web forms for requesting a mail-in ballot. You have the paper form, but you can also do it online. And we’re trying to work on creating signage to post around town, in different parts of the city. We have consulted with the town attorney on some topics to get guidance on how to proceed on a few things, one of which was regarding a request for information that was made about mail-in ballot requests. Following this meeting, the Board of Elections came to Town Hall at our earliest convenience on March 12th to do the work necessary to be able to respond to that request. We have been processing mail-in ballot requests, and the town clerk is contacting the requesters for whom correction on their forms are necessary in order to be approved. Make sure you check your date of birth, that it’s your year of birth and not 2025. Also, if you sign the form today, don’t have it your date of birth. There were a couple of these mistakes. And we have been processing voter registration that have come into the Town Hall, but also previewing candidate nomination petitions to make sure there are no issues on the petitions that need to be corrected before the due date of March 21st. And we have been finally be able to go into our filing cabinets after a hunt of keys, but we now have access to everything, so that is good. So March 21st is our next meeting, 5:30 PM here at Town Hall, and if you have 16- and 17-year-olds, please remind them to register to vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. And anyone online or in person from the Ethics Commission? Nope? Okay, all right. Move to the Women’s History Month proclamation.
Whereas every March, Women’s History Month provides an opportunity to honor the generations of remarkable contributions of women throughout history who have played pivotal roles in shaping our nation’s progress and character. And whereas the 2025 Women’s History Month theme, “Moving Forward Together, Women Educating and Inspiring Generations,” celebrates the collective strength, equality, and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership, shaping the minds and futures of all generations. And whereas education has always been a powerful catalyst for change, and women have been at the forefront driving this transformation, from classrooms to boardrooms, women educators and leaders have played a pivotal role in nurturing minds and inspiring action. It is important to acknowledge and celebrate these contributions, especially at a time when inclusive and equitable education is more critical than ever. And whereas Women’s History is inclusive of all people who identify as women, and it is paramount to acknowledge and celebrate the invaluable contributions of all women, including transgender and gender diverse individuals, who have been at the forefront of movements for equity and social justice. And whereas women from diverse racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic backgrounds have made indelible marks on our nation’s history, often in ways that have not been adequately acknowledged or recorded. And whereas women have been instrumental in advocating for their rights and driving movements for social justice, including suffrage, civil rights, labor rights, LGBTQ+ rights, and more, yet their contributions have been historically undervalued and marginalized. And whereas despite significant progress, women continue to face systemic barriers and discrimination, as evidenced by the persistent gender pay gap and ongoing threats to reproductive rights, bodily autonomy, and gender equality in various spheres of society. And whereas it is incumbent upon us to not only celebrate the achievements of women, but also confront the challenges they face, including regressive legislation that threatens to erode the hard-won gains of the past century. And whereas we commemorate Women’s History Month, let us renew our commitment to the ongoing struggle for gender equity and justice, recognizing that true equality can only be achieved when the rights of all women, particularly the most marginalized among us, are upheld and protected. And now, therefore, the Chevrolet Mayor and Council do hereby proclaim that March is designated as Women’s History Month in Chevrolet, Maryland, and encourage all residents to observe this month. And, Counsel, you will receive this for signature.
All right, and we have our Homestead Tax Credit Ordinance. Councilmember Dallaker, you want to do the third reader for it?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance number 2025-02, an ordinance whereby the mayor and council amends Chapter 30, Income-Based Tax Credit Programs of the Town Code, to revise the amount of the homeowner’s tax credit under the tax credit program. I will not read the whole thing, but I will say that, in substance, it’s going from $50 to $150.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Dallaker. You have read the fair summary, which is what’s required for the third reader. At this point, since we’re at third reader, would we be taking a vote, Mr. Galloway? All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
Is there a motion on the floor?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2025-02.
All right, thank Councilmember Gallagher. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all right, that's the second goes to Bryner. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, thank you. I plan to vote for this. I just want to make sure. Were we guessing, and I know we're guessing to some extent, that we might get as many as 50 valid applications or 50 grant, granted applications for this, or is it 40? I think we had a number, a guesstimate, didn't we?
Yes. When I took a look at the American Community Survey data, the, looking at the total potential number of households, the, the outer bound was around 250. Now, I don't know what that translates to in terms of take-up rate and how many folks actually choose to apply and also qualify for the state and county tax credits.
Councilmember Bryner?
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Gallagher for his diligence in getting this passed. I think it is super important, especially considering the economic realities that we're facing locally and nationally, and I really appreciate the fact that he made this a priority and made it happen.
All right, any more discussion? All right, there's a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As a unanimous vote, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Councilmember Gallagher. Thank you for that work. All right, Mr. Galloway, we have a financial update, and Ms. Mock online?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I will turn the floor over to Town Accountant, Ms. Diane Mock.
Thank you. I think Mr. Galloway provided you some information that has the FY '25 budget numbers on it and then the actual numbers through January 31st. We have reconciled the banks through February.
I'm sorry, our system is froze. Give us one moment, please. Diane, are you here? Can you hear us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We apologize. The system froze.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, very good. Reconciled the bank's accounts through February 28th, but we have a few little things to clean up before we bring the February actual numbers in. So tonight, we're looking at the actual numbers for January 31st. And so that's what you have presented here in front of you. At this time, the budget, the total revenue was budgeted for $13,843, and you have collected $8,580,000 in revenue. Obviously, the largest part of that revenue is your taxes section. Through January 31st, there's been $6.2 million in revenue coming in from taxes. The majority of that is real estate taxes, and at this point, you're about 98% of the budgeted number for real estate collected. So going through the rest of the year, the real estate taxes coming in is marginal. There are still quite a bit of revenues to be collected from income tax and highway user revenues. They're usually a little bit slower and come in, in this latter part of the year. The other line items under revenue are tracking pretty good. Licenses are just about half. Intergovernmental does change, does vary depending upon which grants you have received. So at this point in time, you had budgeted $4.1 million in grants, but we've only reported $805,000. Most of that has to do with ARPA, and the other grants that have, were budgeted for just haven't, haven't materialized yet. The fines and forfeitures, that particular line item, you budgeted $2.1 million. $1.3 million has been collected. The largest of that number is the fines for red light and speed camera. As we discussed last time, we've now grossed up the revenue for the, for the program, the red light program, excuse me, for the speed camera program. We've grossed that up to the gross amount that's being collected, and then the expense associated with it is shown in, on expenditure lineup. Interest and dividends is right where it should be based on $90,000 budget. And miscellaneous has to do with some insurance proceeds that came in during the year. So under expenditures, you have budgeted $14,689,000 in expenditures, and $11,775,000 has been spent so far. The largest of those numbers are in Public Works, having to do with the new building that's being constructed. At this point, as of January 31st, approximately $3 million had been spent on the building during this period of time. I reviewed the expenditures, budget to actual, with Mr. Galloway, and the Chief and the Public Works Director both looked over their January numbers to make sure there wasn't any items that looked unusual. There were very few items that were over-expensed on their budget. We went through those, and some of those had to do with misclassification of expenses. General Government is $3.3 million in budget, has spent $2.1. Public Safety, budget $3.2 million, has spent $1.8. And as I said before, Public Works, $8 million, has spent $5 million. The ARPA budget, it had to be completed by January 31st, excuse me, December 31st of 2024, and the full amount of the ARPA budget has been spent. So if we take the difference between the total expenditures as of January 31st, of $11,775,000 away from the revenue of $8,580, there's a deficit of revenues over expenditures of $3,195,000. But as I noted right below that, $1,410,000 has to do with ARPA, and $2.9 million have to do with the new building. So if we add those back in, because those had been, the money from that had been set aside as part of your appropriated fund balance from June 30th of 2024. So that money is, had come in in previous years, and that's part of the appropriated fund balance of, from June 30th of 24. So if we add that back, then the excess of revenue over expense for this period of time would be $1,184,000. At this point, at February 28th, the cash in the bank at this point in the various bank accounts that you have is $9,200,000. Those were the items I wanted to go over with you this evening. I'll be glad to answer any questions or go over any other items that you might like to.
Okay, Ms. Mock, can you repeat the $9,200,000? Is that, is that the full amount for the unassigned fund balance or just the full amount for all of the accounts?
No, that's the amount of cash in the various bank accounts you have. You have accounts at the regular operating account, you have your short-term investment account, you have an ARPA account. The sum of those accounts at February 28th was 9.2 million.
Councilmember Watson?
Okay, thank you, Diane. This is great. So, and I understand, I guess, two questions. Number one, and I think the answer to the first one's no, i- is a no, but are you at all concerned about the burn rate on the, you know, the fact that we're, the budget, the budget is currently, or the spending is currently $3.2 million in the red? And then number two, second question. So we had $5.6 million in the bank. We passed a budget that was $846,000 in deficit. And I voted for that. And so I guess the question I have is, where do you, do you, what is your best estimate as far as hitting the 846? Are we going to be under that? Are we going to be over that? Because surely we're not going to finish with $6.7 million in the bank.
Right, that, that is an inflated number at this time. You're absolutely correct. The $6.7 million is, what the fund balance would be, if we did a, if you looked at your balance sheet today, that would be the unassigned fund balance. And so, no, I don't believe that will hold because we're in the, the second part of the year where the revenues are coming in not at a clip, at the same rate as the first part of the year, obviously, the, the real estate taxes. Like I mentioned previously, are, we've collected almost 98% of those. So revenue is going to definitely slow down. But we have looked at expenses in budget-to-actual relationship to make sure that we don't see any that are extremely out of line or that are going to go over. In terms of revenue, the, the portion of the budget that was budgeted for intergovernmental, you budgeted for some grants. Well, if those grants don't come in, then you won't have the expenditures associated with them either. So, you know, I don't, I can't say for sure that you're going to be $846,000 deficit, but from everything we see so far, the expenditures are, are running according to their budgets. And I don't see any revenues that are going to be extremely out of line at this point. Now, you are only about 50% on income tax collections. But again, you get payments later in the year, and you also get some payments in July and August following the year that belong to this year. So I think, I think we're moving along pretty good. Thank you.
All right, any further questions? Council? No? Okay, well, thank you very much, Ms. Mock. If there's no additional questions, comments, thank you for the report.
Okay, very good. Have a good evening.
All right, with that, Mayor and Council, we have a flooring to pick for Boyd Park. Mr. Bryner?
Yes, hi. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. Would like to review, I believe in the package you have the, the options. Just going to have Ms. Prom to review them again with you if you wanted to, but we have the three options. I think at the last meeting, there was some concern or some, an expression of support for, for the corking. But as you can see, we've noted in there, the wood carpet does fit within the budget. The rubber does not. I believe we've received some concerns about the, the off-gassing of the rubber. And so at this point, our, our only option available is the, is the corking. We did look into some of the, some of the other options that were expressed that might have liked with LIDC. Did they have an option? And we didn't come up with anything but more or less a similar wood carpet. So I think at this point, you know, we, we do not have the corking in, in the budget, and we don't have that exactly at this point to, to support it, so that would, well, I'm recommending that we do make a decision, but we have to look at the Council's desire to whether or not to increase the price of the project.
Councilmember Gallagher?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we increase the, the price of the, then increase the, the budget for the flooring by an additional $125,000 to cover the cost of the corking.
Okay, Councilmember Gallagher has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, it's been motion and seconded. Discussion? Councilmember Wade?
I'm definitely, I am concerned regarding the cost of it. I know the impact environmental-wise, but looking to go into the remaining of this, this fiscal budget, I do have concerns regarding, I just want to make sure that everyone does know the fact of that. But the environmental impact does weigh on me just as much regarding it as well.
Councilmember Gallagher?
I'd like to appreciate Councilmember Wade's comments. I don't relish the idea of spending an extra $125,000 on this. Just given the other options, they're just not acceptable. We need to have a playground that is accessible to persons with all forms of ability, and we've had some serious concerns about the, the rubber flooring. And based on Public Works' work on this project to try to find, you know, sort of alternatives, this is pretty much it. So it's, it's, the way I'm looking at it now, it's that either we, either we go with the corking, or we, you know, or we really can't, you know, we're, we either throw people with disabilities under the bus, or we throw the environment under the bus. And I kind of don't want to do either of those. So I, I think that just leaves the extra, the, the increase of the cost to $125,000 per my motion. But I, I definitely appreciate where Councilmember Wade's coming from. It's not, not exactly a fun thing to, to have to face, but, you know, I'm just not willing to throw folks with disabilities under the bus. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, I'm, I'm also concerned, well, I don't think we have a good choice. I mean, I guess, I guess I don't love any of our choices here. I, I guess there's a question in here, but, but I think I know the answer, so. But I just want to confirm, so we've already spent the $214,000 that's in the CIP for Boyd Park?
Ms. Prom, I think can shed some detail on that. I believe we've made a commitment to part of that amount. So Ms. Prom?
Yes, that is correct. We have committed to a portion of that amount, but we still have approximately $22,000 remaining to cover the cost of the flooring, which is why the wood chips wouldn't have an additional fee incurred, whereas the corking has that $125,000 and the rubber has that approximately $69,000.
Got it. Okay, so everything else, all the wonderful things we already did were like $195 or something? And that's why you only have 22 of the 214? I got you. Okay. Yeah, I mean, these are, these are all bad options. I, I would also say I wish we could have seen this coming in the budget just, you know, a year ago. We have not, in recent memory that I can recall, had a budget adjustment mid-year that was this large. So that just by itself concerns me. I mean, I, I don't think I have a choice but to support the corking. I mean, I, I don't think I have a choice but to support the corking, but I don't, I don't like making $125,000 budget adjustment on a capital item that is, was, I'm going to say was foreseeable. Maybe not everybody would agree, but I, I think it was, it's not like the HVAC system in Town Hall suddenly went out after eight years. And so, I guess I'm, I'm frustrated by that, but I don't think I have a choice but to vote for it because, as, as my colleague said, the other two options are terrible.
Counselmember Reiner?
It's an election year, so I will also say on the record and into the mic that I don't love spending extra money.
Okay. Thank you for that. I want to offer a couple of things. One is, we understood what we were getting in terms of the assistance for this project, so in terms of it being foreseeable, I would argue that we knew this already. And what we have to do is make decisions based on our values. I'm very grateful that Counselmember Dalaker has highlighted that our values is to make sure that all of our parks eventually will be accessible because all people deserve to play, whether they are able to walk, or they have to use assistance or wheelchairs. I think we should fundamentally believe that all of our parks at some point should become accessible. Right now, we have one, and we have a total of eight parks working on a knife. And so, if you are not a child that can get to that particular park, then you don't have a place to play. And so, I don't think that anything else is a better option. I would argue that for the wood chips or wood carpet, there's already wood there. There's no need for us to even spend that money. It would be a waste to even refresh it. What I will say is, to tie it to something, and Mr. Galway, you can update us when we get to this point, is I have asked for number 14 since I've been in office, since I was a council member. I have asked for a sign that identifies the fourth ward because it has historically been ignored. And we have often had even law enforcement say, "This is not the fourth ward." And so, I specifically have asked for that sign for the last five years. One of the things that I talked with Counsel about before we started our budget cycle this year was, what do you plan to cut? Because the goal is to get through this year without raising taxes for our residents. So then, that means you have to be willing to come to the table with a cut. And I am willing to say, since we had already funded this project for this time, I'm willing to hold on to that till next year. So, that puts money towards this flooring. I think that that's more important than having the signage there. And I, again, will encourage council members to come to the table with what you're ready to cut so that we can do what's best for our residents. All right? I have a motion. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The ayes have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work and research on this, Mr. Berman and Mrs. Prom. We will now hear from Chief, the Public Safety Cameras.
Again, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. You have an issue paper, you have an issue paper before you with regards to a proposal for the installation of public safety cameras. This is in response to the public safety, the community meetings that we held shortly after I arrived here in light of the number of burglaries that occurred along Chevrolet Avenue. And while we were successful in closing those burglaries, working with the county police, and because of the deputy chief's tenacious efforts, we were able to identify the individual and not only identify, but execute search warrants with the assistance of the U.S. Marshals to get that individual off the street. It still remains a concern for the residents. There's, there are a number of costs that are associated with this in light of the previous conversation. I am certainly respectful of that. But probably most important at this point in time is that if we were to move forward at some point in time with the Counsel's approval on these camera systems at the entrance to Chevrolet, or entrance to Chevrolet, both at Columbia Park and the 202 side, at the Columbia Park side, there's a need for a power source. And we've worked with Mr. Berman and his staff and Pepco and contractors to identify the ability to add that power source at a one-time cost. So, while the camera systems themselves may be deferred considering the, the situation with the budget, we do feel that we could accommodate the implementation of the power source and cover that cost under the current, under the current budget. So, it's for the, it's for the consideration of the Mayor and Counsel as to whether or not you want to continue moving forward with the project and at least at this time, get that power source provided. And I can certainly answer any questions to, as it relates to the camera systems and what we propose.
Counsel? Counselmember Reiner?
I've said this before, so I think this will probably be repetitive, but I have serious concerns about adding more surveillance via cameras to town for a number of reasons. I just feel like, first of all, having them at the entrances to the sort of central part of Chevrolet creates a sense of unwelcoming, a sense of border control, a sense of wanting to keep people out. But second of all, just the proliferation of surveillance and the cameras leads, I think, down the road of racial privilege and the opportunity to use that surveillance for not the good that we intended for. And obviously, I stood proud of this, while the chief was being sworn in, and I truly do believe that our chief and our staff have the best intentions, and I know that they would use the system responsibly. But we've had some questionable leadership in the past, and I don't know what leadership is going to be in the future. And so, I just want to register my concern and my position that I just am not interested in adding more technological surveillance to town, whether or not it's just going to be used in specific scenarios because there's always, I mean, who knows what could be asked of us from other law enforcement jurisdictions, from other levels of law enforcement? If we have cameras, can they take that footage? It's kind of the loud question out there. So, I would prefer that we don't have cameras at the entrance.
All right. Thank you, Counselmember Dalaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do, I appreciate Counselmember Reiner's points on that, the potential misuse of, of camera footage. I think where, what stays with me is, and this is something I learned from going to the Board for Civic Association meetings, that there are folks who live, I'm talking about Trent Street specifically, where there would be dumping, folks would just think that, hey, this is an okay place to dump garbage, this is an okay place to, it's out of the way, it's, no one really cares about this. And I think that the cameras were requested by the residents who live in the neighborhood to be able to feel the same sense of safety that folks would say on my block. I don't have to deal with folks coming by on Chevrolet Circle or Chevrolet Avenue and just dumping a bunch of garbage off to the side. I don't have to deal with that. And so, looking at a camera would be sort of, without having to necessarily have officers patrolling, you know, all the time, that might be sort of a lower way of doing it, a lower cost with maintaining some sort of surveillance. And I also want to emphasize that, especially with regard to Trent Street, that's right by the wooded area, it's not, it's not exactly the main thoroughfare by which someone would walk into Chevrolet. It's sort of an alleyway nowhere folks can say, yeah, maybe I can get away with X, Y, or Z. So, I think that's why I am more favorable toward having the cameras, particularly because the residents of the neighborhood have asked for them. But yeah, I don't know if I'm necessarily across the board, pro-camera in every circumstance or in every place in Chevrolet, but I think definitely for Trent Street that, that I'd feel like it's a special circumstance. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Dalaker. Counselmember Wade? And I think Counselmember Reiner?
Along the lines of Counselmember Dalaker, based on a review of response from one of the residents, that the concern of safety is more important than anything else, but I do respect the fact of privacy and recording of individuals. I guess the question for others is to make sure that, from the budget, the power source would be the $15,000, but the remaining balance would come from grants. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's, that's the intent.
Okay. And just to piggyback off of Counselmember Dalaker, but I've mentioned in the past regarding 58 Newton Street, we talked about not just the safety aspect, you know, when I left my home, there was people parked there all sorts of night, but also the dumping that's done there, and we spoke about that in the past, so I hope that, that area is also looked at. I know we don't have a power source there, so that would be the cost associated with the town, but that is an area that's very similar to the fact that it needs a camera there as well, as mentioned in the past, so hopefully we can look at that and work with people regarding it as well. People go to, live in DC all the time, there's a camera on every corner, so I think it's something that we, as a society, we have come accustomed to, will continue to happen. I think it's up to us, elected officials, as well as staff, to make sure that our relevance, that we act, exercise a duty of care regarding its peoples, their information and their photographs. But the safety, hence the 24/7 policing, all the things we're revamping at our public safety department, this is something that's very important to the town. So, I am in favor. Thank you.
All right. Counselmember Reiner and then Watson?
I did want to clarify that, I actually am in favor of the camera, supportive of the camera on Trent Street, people being addressing a specific need that has been identified, and it's about sort of preventing a crime rather than catching people. And I did want to look forward an idea, which is that we establish some kind of an advisory committee or a group that could review when there is a proposal for new types of surveillance in town, so that we could have some resident input, some folks who are maybe really tuned in to this issue, maybe can use the technology better than I can. Or set a policy that we have a public hearing and we're going to install things like cameras so that we have a better chance of getting them called. I just feel like if we are going to put surveillance out there, that there needs to be more input from the community and just a, oh, I feel like it's getting me there. I feel like if we are putting more surveillance out there, we need to create systems so that the public can provide input and so that there can be a closer review from residents and not just that.
Counselmember Watson?
Yeah, I love the idea of some kind of, you know, formalized or semi-formalized civil rights protection committee or group. She's spelled like "under" on the public hearing, but I think it's a little, underutilized tool. The Mayor and Counsel can involve a public hearing on any issue anytime we want. And so, I think going forward, I would be comfortable, since starting March, with making some planning for this in the budget that doesn't take effect until July 1st, and then at some point this summer or after the summer, when vacations are over, having a advertised public hearing, maybe with some experts who in this, who do this, protect people or whatevers, combined with a, you know, public hearing where we invite folks to come in, either provide specific suggestions like Trent Street, or provide a kind of generalized yes or no on the idea. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselmember Dalaker?
Yeah, I think the, the idea of hearing or committee or some type of review, I'm very much in favor of that. Definitely in favor of safeguards and protections of civil rights. That's fantastic, and I like, I like the ideas that are going forward. Thank you.
Counselmember Garson?
I'm off of the cameras. Definitely a redundant one ahead of me, rolling that arena. I'm off of the cameras. I'm tired of seeing all this, this crazy thing going around, we can't seem to turn fast caps at people. So, if the chief got my support on there.
Madam Mayor, could I address some of the concerns? I think I might be able to assuage some of those. So, so a number of things. First and foremost, I appreciate exactly what Counselmember Reiner has stated. And, you know, I took an oath earlier to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States, and the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution protects against unreasonable searches and seizures. Not all searches and seizures, but those that are unreasonable. And I'm mindful that the courts have continually ruled, all the way up to the Supreme Court, that there's no expectation of privacy in, in right of ways. Now, I don't, I don't say that lightly. I, I say that because the courts have upheld that, and as already been stated, you really can't go anywhere without being on a camera in, in some form or fashion. But with that said, the, the General Assembly has already taken the action to institute many of the safeguards that have been mentioned here, in particular with regards to retention, blurring capabilities, what can be captured, so. And, and Counselmember Reiner, I have to apologize because I specifically was talking about Chevrolet Avenue primarily over on Columbia Park because of the need for the power source. And looking at the cost of our electric bills, that's not getting any cheaper, so I was only suggesting that from that recommendation, if we're going to move forward with, with any of this project, that certain areas need to have the power source. But the other areas that we're looking at, and some of them were identified in the issue paper, was Trent Street, State Street, as well as Chevrolet Station, and over on Newton Street. So, those are just a number of the areas. You know, the, the purpose of this, of these cameras, and I have to, again, just state it candidly, they're not surveillance. Surveillance is a very specific nomenclature from what is used in law enforcement when it comes to investigations and things of that nature. So, while these are investigative tools, they're not, the intent is not facial recognition. In fact, these cameras would not have that, while the capability is there, we have no intention of turning that on. And I think that the idea of having a policy group to assist with, with, with making sure that those policies are established is well worth the time and the effort. But it is a force multiplier from an investigative perspective with regards to the ALPRs, the license plate readers, and seeing who's in those areas at particular times when crimes are committed, particularly the vehicles that are coming in. And there's a host of, a host of investigative capabilities that, that the law enforcement has at its disposal. The, you know, we have red light cameras that are video activated. We have automated speed enforcement cameras that capture the violations, and in fact, I testified several times this, during this General Assembly session, on a bill as it relates to the retention period of certain automated enforcement footage, whether it be still photo or, or video. And, and I think that that bill will probably pass, and it puts a retention of one year, unless there is an active criminal investigation for which the evidence would have to be maintained for a longer period of time. Likewise, all the LPR data goes through MK Likewise, all the LPR data goes through MKAC, so MKAC is the state agency that would be subject to the audit. So there's a lot of safeguards that are already in place, and I absolutely support having a policy, because again, I think I just swore in getting ready to execute a contract for an extended period of time to be your chief, but I can respect the fact that you never know who's going to be sitting in these, any of these positions, whether it's at this table or at that table. And we want to make sure, we have to ensure for public safety and for the safety, the comfort of the community, that we have good, strong policies in place. So I would rely heavily on those policies that are already in place and enacted by the General Assembly, and what we can do here to make sure that the residents of Chevrolet feel safe, because it's not a matter, in my humble opinion, of whether or not a community is safe if a community doesn't feel safe. And I've certainly heard that repeated from a number of our residents as it relates to some of those crimes that occurred, and we can do the best that we can do, but these are just an additional tool, and using that tool in the proper capacity is extremely important. So I appreciate the comments and the questions, and I look forward to working with the mayor and council and the community to make sure that any of those concerns are abated.
All right, anyone else? All right.
Yes. Mayor and council, I just wanted to remind this mayor and council, previous council adopted an emergency funding so that cameras could be installed in an area to prevent these type of crimes from happening, if you will. If you remember, we had to install the cameras on Trent Street because we had a series of events that happened down there that made Ward, the old Ward 4 feel uncomfortable. So whenever you're thinking about implementing a policy of public hearing, please do not overpolicy ourselves to make emergency decisions in the event that we have to, because there may be another area in town that we might need to do that again. But just wanted to remind you all about what we've done in the past, and if we need to do that in the future, then I think you all need to have the wiggle room to do so. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gallway. I certainly appreciate Councilmember Reiner's sentiments. I will go on the record, quite frankly, to say I was astonished when I shared that I was in leadership in Chevrolet, with many people who are not residents of Chevrolet, who has said as a person of color they have been pulled over by police. I will tell you, there is not one that I have met that has not said that if they came through Chevrolet, they weren't pulled over, not one person, which is astonishing. And so the town of Chevrolet certainly has a history in terms of how it polices people, and we cannot ignore that. That being said, as someone who walked down to the fire that was on Trent Street and saw the car that was set on fire, and saw the dumping, and saw the response to people thinking there was an operable camera, because at one point we had an operable camera, and then we didn't, and people still felt like they no longer could dump there, so the cameras actually worked. I still think that there's a valid reason to have the cameras in place. Where there's lots of folks that I feel like they're overpoliced for these further reaches of Chevrolet, whether that's in Ward 1 or Ward 4, or Chevrolet Station Apartments, folks often feel underpoliced, like they don't have the protections that they need, and so I think the cameras help with that. With that, do we need to vote on this, chief? Because is it past $10,000? So it's a budget adjustment? Or is it within your budget?
We can handle that power install, and I would, I know that Mr. Bremen's on, so even if the project didn't move forward, the need for the power there at a future time for other types of events or projects that may be beneficial to either the police department or Public Works, Public Works may still be worthwhile. So I just invite, you know, if I may, if there's any comments from Mr. Bremen as it relates to that, he's the expert.
All right, Mr. Bremen.
If I may, I would... So with respect to installing the power, that does exceed $10,000. I believe we're looking to try to encompass this in our current budgeted funds, so at this point, I'd recommend maybe us having authority to, you know, spend the funds that are within our current budgets to realize this installation as we develop this further. So we do need your authority to make a purchase in excess of $10,000.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you, Mr. Bremen, so I would need a motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowler.
Madam Mayor, I move that we empower the town administrator and director Bremen to purchase the power source and camera systems as outlined in the staff recommendations provided in our packets.
There's been motion, is there a second? Thank you, Councilmember Garza, is any discussion? Councilmember Wade?
As mentioned, the Newton Street, is it possible to look into adding that in the budget as well? Because you need a power source there as well.
Yeah, I can work with Mr. Bremen to determine what would be needed down there, and if there's an additional cost, we can bring that back to the mayor and council. There may be other sources of power down there, but you know better than I do, but we'll work on that.
Okay. This is based on the conversation we had before, Mr. Gallway, right? That we need a power source there, is that correct? Okay.
Councilmember Watson.
Okay, what is the $15,000 bias? A power connection on Columbia Park Road?
The power connection coming into Chevrolet Avenue at Columbia Park.
Because there's no, currently no power at the 711 corner?
There's no power on the, what am I thinking? It's southbound side of Chevrolet Avenue coming off of Columbia Park.
Okay, and what, I'm sorry, this might be a Mr. Gallway question, what are we going to do with this power on the non-camera side? Like, what does Public Works need the camera for? I mean, power, what does Public Works need the power for?
I'll defer to the Public Works, right.
I believe the thought is, is that this would allow for a future, allow us to think broader down there, but the original intent was to actually power the cameras, but we would hope to be able to have some additional, you know, benefits by installing this power future date.
Councilmember Wade?
Just for clarification, are we, I want to make sure that the motion does not include the camera systems itself, because it looks like we're going to look at grant funding for that. This is just for the power source. Correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Dowler mentioned camera systems as well, so it's well in the motion, so just want to make sure we're clear with that.
It's just for the power source. Do you feel like there needs to be a clarification to the motion?
Oh, the issue.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Reiner.
Good. I would like to amend or clarify my motion. I would like to empower the town administrator and director Bremen to purchase the power source as outlined in the staff recommendations. This may be a budget amendment, and to move forward on investigating the camera systems using the existing funds that they have already been budgeted for.
All right, it sounds like the motion has been refined. Do we still have the second, Councilmember Garza?
The budget amendment is for the power source, but the camera systems are for the funds, the already, the already existing budgeted in the Public Works budget.
If I may...
Mr. Bremen.
I believe the chief and I think that between our budgets, we can cover this power source. We haven't, so, but it's, but I believe, and what I had said was, I believe that we can, we're looking at trying to cover this with already budgeted funds, so I don't believe it would be a budget amendment. Just authorization for us to proceed with the company that would install it at approximately $15,000.
Thank you, Mr. Bremen. So we already have money allocated to cover this, this is just a procurement issue, which is that we don't allow purchases past $10,000 without coming before mayor and council.
It's a procurement issue. We don't have a line item for this project, but I think the chief and I have discussed that we were looking to find the monies in our budgets to be able to cover this.
Any further questions? Councilmember Wade?
Just to ask, to make sure, is there money in the budget to do a power source at Newton Street as well, to have that as well? And if you had two of them, would there be possible of a discount to be done in order to do that?
We would have to get back with you. As of right now, the quote that we have is for the one power source that's been quoted. So as far as getting a discount, we couldn't advise you on that at this moment. We can get a quote for Newton Street and bring it back to the next town hall meeting.
Got it. So is, but is there money in the budget for now to do that?
I'm not confident to say yes or no at this moment. We need to get together and collaborate to see what is available, but we do know that this $15,000 is available for the current request.
Got it.
Councilmember Dowler?
Thank you. I'd like to amend my motion to, to clarify, I'd like to empower the, I move that we empower the town administrator and director Bremen to procure the power source and camera systems as outlined in the staff recommendations, and also to explore with the contractor the possibility of a possible discount if an additional power source were to be provided for Newton Street. Is that clear?
Let me ask the person that offers your second, are you clear on that, Councilmember Garza, this before?
No, I think it's just that the power, the camera system portion of that.
Yeah. So the specific request is that we are authorizing our staff to move forward with the installation of the power source, and the power source only, not the cameras, because the cameras are covered by grants. It sounds like you want to add to that to include consideration for Newton, and what I would ask is, do we have a quote that is time limited, chief?
So I'll tell you what, I would like to recommend to the mayor and council that we put this in a parking lot until the next town meeting. You all give us an opportunity to get a second quote, and then let us reevaluate finances from there. There may be some additional grants that we can recommend that we will apply for. Let us do some additional due diligence for that second location. We'll put this down for the next town meeting and make a recommendation from that point on.
All right, Councilmember Reiner.
Can I just ask a quick question? So if you had grant money for this power source, as well as the cameras, it sounds like you could just go ahead and install the cameras without bringing it before mayor and council?
No, we would have to come to mayor and council, get the approval before installing the cameras. That was the precedent that was set when we installed the cameras on Trent Street and on...
State Street.
State Street.
Great, okay.
Approval was needed for that.
All right, Councilmember Dowler?
I would like to withdraw the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowler. I think we can move forward to the Ely building update.
I'll continue on. Mr. David Trembley, if he could be highlighted, is joining us. You may recall, Mr. Trembley actually was with us at the beginning of the design build and the designing of the Ely project. He walked us through the scope and through the beginning parts. Mr. Trembley has rejoined, I think it's fair to say he's now shadowing this project to just make sure that we are expediting it as quickly as possible. Mr. Trembley, I think is going to touch upon some of the challenges, some of the successes, and maybe even some opportunities we've realized through the challenges. So with that, I'd like to let Mr. Trembley walk us through an update on the William Ely Jr. Building.
Thank you, and thank you for mayor and council for letting me rejoin you. I've met a lot of you before, I was involved in this project from the onset and helped take it through the design phase and the development, and then turning it over to our operations team for construction. So as Steve said, I've gotten re-engaged in the job as, through our typical process, checking in with our team, providing some oversight, learned that we were having some challenges in the anticipated opening of the building, and so I was, I'm here to offer my support to the team and to get it back on track. Primarily, we've hit, one of our most challenging things that we've run into here that's affected the schedule is a release of a, was a request to SCD for resequencing and phase, and a re-phasing of some site work. That site work with the technical parts, we had our stabilized construction entrance and our transformer locations were in conflict with each other, and so typically this process would be rather, rather easy to, we think, thought from past history we'd be able to do this at the inspector level, or worst case to it, it's a red line revision. We had some unanticipated complications in that process, there were some new processes that the county's gone through, there's some new standards that they, that they've implemented on this, and so that process was much more convoluted than we expected and is, and ultimately caused a delay. Why is that important? What does it affect? The sequencing affects all of our site utilities that are critical for what we call UNO, or use and occupancy, which is actually the ability to use the building, and so it affects things like PECO for the permanent power, WSSC for water and sewer, and ultimately ended up affecting the, being able to demolish the existing Public Works building and to be able to finish the paving and access. So it was really important to get through that. Our team has pulled together with the design team, obviously the help from Public Works. We are past that, we have those approved plans from SCD. We just got those, I think it was last week released, which is, which is good news. What we have to do with that at this point is we have, we have to change, we have to go back into our baseline CPM schedule and enter that data in so we can have a better, put the logic ties in there and have a better or more accurate substantial completion date at this, at this time in the projects. We, we can't just, we just can't guess at a date, we have to have it in the schedule and be able to, be able to present that to you. So one of the things we wanted to do was request to present it at the meeting on the 27th, so that we can come back after we've had an opportunity to do that and then be able to present a little bit more detail with that to everyone again, and then they have, be able to have some actual dates for when we can anticipate substantial completion and then final completion. It's our understanding that the town wants to start planning some things like, well, ribbon cutting or an open house or some of the closeout processes, and we're in full support of that. First things first, we want to make sure that we get UNO, we get all of the, all the activities completed so that we can have the fire marshal approve us to be able to occupy the building and use it as a new Public Works facility, and then ultimately then we can advise on some of those other ceremonial activities that can come after that. As far as positives, some silver linings in here, the, in the process, there have been some design upgrades to the design upgrades, uh, to the project. Um, I think so, some, some AV, um, equipment, some, uh, vehicle lift equipment, uh, access controls, mayor and council chambers. Those upgrades, um, have been, um, we've been able to accommodate those, those design changes in the process as we've been waiting for this, um, re-sequencing to, uh, to be approved. So, there is some, some silver lining in the process. Um, so with that, I think, Steve, if I'm missing anything, let me know. But, uh, at this point, we, we wanted to just give you this, uh, quick update, and then we'll be, we'd like to come back in two weeks and give you a little more specific update once we have the actual CPM schedule, um, and the logic ties put back in.
I would just add that we have, um, we have discussed with David and with the larger color team about, um, making sure that we have ample notice, um, uh, of any ribbon cutting, um, and we're plan, planning that out to be able to give the, the family and, and others ample notice to, to join us. Um, we also, um, would like to see, and David needs more time to actually work this through or calculate this through in their, uh, uh, project management scheduling, um, uh, system, but whether or not we can, um, look to accommodate, uh, uh, an open house, um, at, in the latter part of April. And so, um, that's a goal at this point. Um, and so, um, Mr. Trembley, we wanted to bring him forward, but, um, he is committed to come back in two weeks and have, have, have the, have the pencil sharpened.
All right, Councilmember Watson? Councilmember Delka? I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Trembley, I'm pretty confused about what the, um, what was, what was entailed with the, uh, having to re-phase. Uh, you said there was a new set of approvals or a different set of approvals? Like, to explain it to me like I'm a, a lay person. Um, the, so, this has to do with the utilities, right?
Yes, the utilities, right. It, the, well, the site, the site sequencing has to do with, uh, all activities on site. So, it's going to be paving, uh, stormwater management, sediment control, and anything related to that. SCD governs that, and they put a very prescriptive and, and strict, they call it sequence of construction on those plans, that you have to do it in a, in a particular order. And sometimes it doesn't make common sense as far as one activity being in front of the other one. Uh, there's, you know, from our history, there's been, uh, obviously opportunities where you work with an inspector and you move one activity, and you say, this doesn't make sense to, to, for example, they, we can't put the, the paving underneath the, uh, existing building until we take the existing building down. Um, and so, those, that's one that we've had in the process that, if you recall, this process, project was supposed to be an occupied site. Uh, Public Works obviously moved out, made provisions to that, so we could, uh, take the building down early. But you can't take it down early unless you go get specific approval from SCD, because that's not the sequences on those drawings. So, yes, it affects utilities, but it also affects the activities in the sequence of, of doing the actual work. Um, and so...
Okay.
Trying to explain this in simple terms, yes, it's utilities, but it's also the other activities that are involved. The, the activities at the front of the site with this, uh, stabilized construction entrance and the transformer pad, uh, that was one where it's a, it's a, it's a conflict the way it's shown. We did, you know, nobody thought it was going to, uh, create any kind of a major issue, but ultimately, again, the inspector couldn't approve that, and, and what could typically be done is red line revision, we, uh, was also not acceptable, and SCD required a formal process to get that conflict, uh, resolved on the, on the plans. There were just, there was just an overlap, and you can't actually put the transformer in while you still have the stabilized construction entrance there at the same time. The construction entrance needs to move to allow space for the transformer to be set for the new power. Um, these things, they're, they're, these are not significant changes, but the administrative process that ultimately was required of us, um, was just a lot more than, uh, what we would have anticipated.
Okay, so, the county, basically, they have these, are these sort of new requirements that were put in place, uh, before the project, excuse me, uh, midway through the project? Is that, is that what the issue is, that it's coming as a surprise?
Yeah, that's my, that's my understanding, and, and I will say, I have not been involved in the day-to-day of this project. I'm, I'm not on the construction operations side, so, I'm, so some of this is, I'm vetting through our operation team and our, and our civil engineer. Um, but that's, that's my understanding, that, that, you know, if we had not gone back in for any requests, it wouldn't have affected us. But because we went back in during construction, uh, they were applying some of those, um, new processes to our request. And so, things that, you know, historically would have been a, what we call a red line revision, uh, are now a complete resubmission. Um, and so, that took, um, longer and a, a, a longer review time, the county, or I'd say with, with SCD in this case.
SCD being the Soil Conservation District.
Correct. They govern sediment control.
All right, thank you. Um, so, it sounds like we, there's, there's a couple, for, to my, in my way of thinking, there's two different issues, right? There's like, when is the building going to be ready? And it sounds like we might be six weeks away from being able to do an open house there. I would point out that the deadline for the April newsletter is tomorrow, so probably don't do an open house in April, but unless you're going to advertise it in the newsletter, which is due tomorrow. Um, I, so, that would be great if we could see the building, have an open house, show the public what they paid $14 million for, et cetera. Separate issue, when is the site going to start being usable again? Because we've got everything in this, at the bottom of the hill that's not accessible, and then we've got residents on Forest Road who are essentially living in what looks like a prison camp. So, when is the fencing, like, the year or two of fencing going to start to end and be taken down?
Sure, and, um, I would say, unfortunately, I'm going to have to defer that to the next meeting, um, because we have to get our schedule again. I'd rather have my, uh, construction operations team be able to speak to that. Um, but obviously, that, all of that comes down at, at the time of use and occupancy. So, what, again, I keep going back to use and occupancy, because that, that doesn't have to do with any kind of, like you said, an open house or ribbon cutting. That's the actual opening when, when the Public Works can take the facility and take the site and start using it for its intended purpose. And so, we're kind of working backwards to figure out, you know, what activities are left that we have to have to make that happen. Um, and, and yes, pulling, pulling back, the fen, the fencing is there, uh, I think you're talking about up the hill for the water and sewer lines, the incoming utilities that are coming up from Forest Drive, um, down to the hill. I think that's what we're talking about. And so, um, we should be, we, by having the schedule update on the 27th, we'll be able to have that activity and give you a better idea of when we can expect that to, to look, look like the finished condition.
Any other council members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Trembley.
Thank you. We look forward to the ribbon cutting and the opening.
All right. Mr. Berman?
Yes, ma'am. I think you brought this up earlier. Um, I have, uh, it's been, um, a bit of a lift, but I have worked closely with, uh, VMP Construction. That is the, uh, the company that we, uh, work with, um, closely on our asphalt and concrete. Um, and they have presented an estimate to me of approximately $80,000, um, to complete a monument sign similar to what we have on, uh, Chevrolet Avenue and 202, um, over by the, uh, Fourth Ward. Um, we, um, still, uh, need to, um, you know, Mr. Galloway, uh, has made some progress with the, uh, county and, uh, citing it on the land there, but I, uh, I believe we'll also do, have to do some additional work, um, in, in that area as well. Um, I did, uh, hear earlier, um, what, um, what you commented on with respect to, uh, this versus the flooring, so, um, I'm open to additional feedback on, on, on how we proceed and/or, um, when we proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Is our estimate timestamped? Is, I think the last time we got an estimate, it was for a specific amount of time?
Um, he didn't note that, but o, over time, prices generally do, um, in, increase. So, um, um, I, I would sure, he would rework this up, um, if we came back in, you know, uh, six months, um, and he might need to, uh, uh, increase some of the costs. One of the, one of the tricks was, you know, there, Marvel is in, in part of this, and so, um, you know, he had a, he had a tough time, um, getting, getting a quote from, uh, a Marvel dealer that would, uh, uh, address it appropriately. Um, so, um, I guess that's, that's a variable that I'm not, I'm not sure how much that would change over, over time. So, um, so I would think, and, and so, no, he didn't timestamp it, but if, I think if we go past more than, uh, two or three months, it, it, it's likely to, uh, change somewhat.
And did we already have this covered in, in the budget?
Um, not specifically.
Okay. What were we going to be pulling from this to cover the cost?
Um, I think a thought was, is, is maybe seeing, uh, how we were getting close to at the end of the, closer to the end of the fiscal year, and seeing if we could, um, do similar even more so than, you know, with, uh, finding if we had some, you know, uh, monies that we could, you know, um, cobble up, so to speak, or, 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 or bring together with, uh, that would allow us to move this forward, um, if, if there were some unspent funds in, in, in the current budget.
Okay. Um, council, Councilmember Watson?
Um, yes, I love this idea. There is, uh, in the budget, there's $140,000 for, in FY '26. So, it's, it's in the CIP for year plus one. Um, and so, if we were to just carry the CIP forward, um, you know, in three months, 2026 will be the current year. So, I guess what I'm asking is, couldn't we, again, there's nothing in the current budget, as Mr. Berman said, but we have a placeholder for next year. We could make that placeholder 140 or 90 or something with a little bit of a cushion when Mr. Galloway... I guess I'm asking you, Mr. Galloway, if you could please propose, when you propose page 51, that CIP item, put the, the monumental sign up in FY '26, which will be year zero at that point, for, you know, a comfortable amount. It doesn't have to be 140, it could be 100. And, and that would actually gel with our five-year CIP. And then, that fiscal year starts in three and a half months. I mean, you could start all the planning. We just couldn't pay for it until the next fiscal year, assuming we adopt what I just said, which is, you know, not a given, but that would be my request for the proposal.
All right. Any other council members? Okay. Um, this is, was specifically a request from me when I was a council member. Um, so, I, I am very passionate about it, particularly because of the history of where the, um, sign would sit. Uh, it was actually part of a town that was left out of the initial historic district, so it's critically important to identify that part of town. Um, but I think that if what we do is look at the rest of the resources that we have left over and pay that towards our corkeen, um, and then have this allocated for the budget for next fiscal year, which is just a few months away, I think that supports, um, the values that we have espoused as a mayor and council. Is there any other comments or questions from council? All right. I don't know that that needs to be a motion, Mr. Berman. Um, if you can just find out if they'll hold that quote for us and make sure that we can, you know, um, cover it in our upcoming budget. And then, Mr. Galloway, if you can show the differences in that when we get the budget, that would be great. All right. With that, um, if nothing further, Mr. Berman, Mr. Galloway?
Good evening, mayor and council, town of Chevrolet. Just a few updates. Uh, number one, I need some clarity on the public hearing that we had earlier. Um, just so that I'm clear. There wasn't a vote on the speed humps, correct?
No.
So, are we going to come back and vote on that in, at the work session, or what's, what's the plan for that?
I would hear from Councilmember Watson.
I, I'd be fine voting at the work session or at the April town meeting. I, I would defer to Mr. Berman's concrete and weather needs. Um, but I would like to vote at one of the next two meetings, whatever the pleasure of the council and, and Mr. Berman's operational need is.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll schedule it for the town work session.
Okay. Um, just a note, uh, I obviously get emails all the time. We already have an email about the brevity of the meeting. We did wait for as many community members to come on. Uh, we obviously started the meeting on time. So, there is feedback already about possibly changing that location. Mr. Berman, that's already been forwarded to you, so if we can get some information about that. Um, I, I'm actually glad the vote is not happening today, because we have feedback from community, and so we need to make sure we consider that before we move forward.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Galloway, your report?
Um, just going down my report. Number one, Columbia Park Road update. Uh, mayor and council, uh, the permits for the stoplight cameras on Columbia Park Road have been approved. Um, they have not been issued yet. They have been approved. They will be issued soon. Okay? So, however, we're still waiting for an update from the district engineer regarding the traffic light coordination, uh, between the state, uh, traffic light and the county traffic light. Um, and I hope to have an update for you all by the next town work session. Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, Wamata will be, uh, performing fence maintenance on Monday, March 17th, on Columbia Park Road. So, if you see any activity going on there, uh, they will be there repairing the fence. I do know that there have been some questions about the parking lot due to the increase of ridership. Um, I forwarded those questions, and I've asked, and, uh, an email was replied back to me, and I've asked for some, uh, clarification and more details. So, as soon as I get what I asked for, I will update the mayor and council. Uh, just to let you all know, town staff, um, applied for federal error marks, um, with Kilmer Street Park and the bike trail being our primary, uh, priorities. So, just to let you all know that, and it looks like that we may need to apply for, um, some, uh, camera money from, from the, uh, House. I'm excited to announce that we've been awarded $110,000, um, for a project charge award. This financial award administered through, uh, Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. It's a reimbursable award. Um, it's for this current fiscal year, and mayor and council, just to let you all know, one of the, um, projects that we will move forward with is replacing, uh, the gym floor and renovating the gym, the gym bleachers. So, I'm looking forward to doing that and moving forward with this project. Any questions right now? Regarding Home Team Five in Urban Atlantic, mayor and council, if you have not already done so, please respond to Giselle regarding the date to meet with, um, Home Team Five in Urban Atlantic for a small presentation. Um, home, we, we're also coordinating with advisory board, um, advisory boards to the mayor and council so that they can meet with Home Team Five as well. Any questions about Home Team Five and the coordination of those meetings? Mayor and council, at the January work session meeting, we went over the Hometown Heroes Program that was proposed by Mr. Gary Bell. Um, just to go over a few of the bullet points that I'm going to recommend to you all. Number one, a policy needs to be established to provide guidelines for the program. A review committee should be formed to evaluate flag requests. The approval process should be similar to the existing grant approval process. Approved flags may be displayed at Legion Park, and the cost for a flag will be $240 for a 30 by 92 flag. Um, those are the details that, um, I have provided to Mr. Gary Bell, and we'll have another discussion about this at, uh, the work session, but just wanted to get some feedback from you all on how you would like to move forward.
I know at the work session, we were all very supportive of this, so I'd, is there any comments or questions from council? Um, Mr. Galloway, if, if at the next work session, can we have, um, I know he brought, uh, paper images... Mr. Galloway, if at the next work session, can we have, I know he brought paper images, but can we get just a good idea of the dimensions of what you just described for the size?
Yes.
That would be great.
Sure can. So maybe this is something for the policy committee to meet so that we can draft a policy for this. Just a few more things. Mayor, we met with the Office of Human Rights earlier this week, had a really great meeting with them, and in fact, I will be inviting them to the work session meeting to give a brief presentation so that mayor and council and the community can be made aware of what services are provided by the Office of Human Rights. In regards to the Maryland National, I'm sorry, Maryland Municipal League Conference, all registrations and hotel rooms have been completed, booked. Upcoming events, Wednesday, March 19th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we have the Red Cross Blood Draft. We have a youth event on March 19th from 6:00 a.m., 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. for the NCAA Watch Party. And our very first meeting regarding the fiscal year '26 budget will be next Thursday, March 20th at 7:00 p.m. And mayor and council, are there any questions for me right now? All right. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Seeing none, Chief?
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. The deputy chief and I are going to tag team this report. We've provided a written report. We're going to hit some of the highlights. Under the personnel staffing, training, administrative aspects, the police department recently received notification from Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission that we're 100% compliance with all the COMAR regulations as it relates to training and certification. That's an annual certification that just ensures that we're doing everything that we're supposed to do in accordance with the law. So we're glad that we're in a, certainly glad that we're in compliance. If we weren't, that'd be a problem, and I don't anticipate any problems moving forward as well. Likewise, we just received, just received the results of an NCIC audit through the Maryland State Police. That audit was conducted in April of last year. We just received the report that indicates that we're in compliance with all NCIC access and all the security protocols associated with it. It's a very in-depth, very detailed audit covering 37 different sections within the state laws that relates to policy, security certifications, and maintaining the confidentiality of anything related to criminal histories. So again, we were 100% compliance with that, with that audit. They, I want to touch briefly on the stop sign cameras, just to give mayor and council an update and then determine what action for moving forward. I gave a brief update at the work session. I got some additional detail. It continues to show that Newton and 57th and 62nd and Kilmer have the highest number of vehicles traveling through those cameras and showing that of the number of vehicles that go through, that the violations being captured are 85% at Newton and 57th and another 82% at 62nd and Kilmer. Jason and 63rd, Forrest and Chevrolet, 63rd and Kilmer and Chevrolet, Oakton Way have a much less, lesser volume of traffic, but equally high percentages of violations. So I don't think that's surprising based on what we saw in the presentation by the provider that's operating these systems right now for us. So the question for the mayor and council to consider is the next step would be a public hearing, and I'll leave that to the mayor and council to determine best way forward. Proud, very proud to announce that our Axon in-car cameras, body worn cameras are in place. All of the in-car cameras were outfitted this week. The Axon responded here to the town and installed that. It was part of our contract, so it was a substantial savings. Just want to give kind of an overview of what these systems do and how they interact and where we can set up another date and time where we could do a demonstration for the mayor and council and the community if they're interested in seeing greater detail. But when the in-car cameras are activated, the in-car cameras are activated as soon as we activate the emergency equipment. That will automatically also activate the body worn camera of the officer in the car. So it removes the thinking piece of it, particularly under stress, and creates an auto activation. That does not happen in reverse. If the body worn camera is activated, it does not automatically activate the in-car camera. Equally important, when the officers activate their body worn cameras or the in-car camera activates, it activates all the body worn cameras of all the officers that are in the area within about 50 feet. So it's a lot of footage and a lot of storage and a lot of data review, but it's designed that way because it captures all of the, or as many perspectives as possible. I've mentioned before the Signal Sidearm, that's the device that will attach to officers' holster, so every time they draw their weapon out of the holster, it will activate their body worn camera and the body worn cameras of officers within 50 feet. Unfortunately, there was a technological glitch, so those devices have been sent back. We're waiting for them to come back and we'll get them installed. Likewise, when our officers deploy the ECDs, also known as tasers, that automatically activates the body worn camera. And this was a system that, all of these systems could be modified, but we're trying to take the most proactive approach to having these cameras activate interactively. So when we transport prisoners, the in-car cameras also have a rear facing camera, so the minute that the door that the prisoner, the arrestee, would be placed into is opened, it automatically activates the rear facing camera. So we're taking as much of the guesswork out of it as possible. Rest assured, we are, our policy follows the model policy that was established by the Maryland Police Training Commission, which was established as a result of a task force back in 2021 to look at all of the nuances associated with these camera systems, both the body worn camera and in-car camera. So a lot of work and a lot of credit goes to Corporal Soller, who's overseeing this project. It's certainly a significant enhancement for the department and for the town and for the safety of the officers, as well as the safety of the community. And unless there's any questions right now, I'll turn it over to the deputy chief to address some of the patrol issues.
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. Just bring a few things to your attention. On March 11th, 2025, CPD officers responded to 2519 Chevrolet Avenue after receiving information and a call regarding theft from auto. Ring cameras from the neighbors showed very clear footage of this suspect, and we've had several over the last few weeks. This same suspect was stopped and identified just one week prior, and that particular evening Corporal Valencia and Officer Brown canvassed the surrounding area for several hours after this incident occurred. At approximately 3:00 in the morning, officers observed the suspect in the backyard of 3103 Hillside Avenue. He attempted to flee on foot and was quickly apprehended, placed under arrest. Additional arrest warrants are coming because we, this same suspect is linked to several other theft from autos in the town over the past few weeks, and because of the Ring Cam footage that was given to us by the neighbors, we're able to see clearly on this video that it is 100% him. So, you know, we're also additionally, CPD officers, they're going to be working with Prince George's County and all our surrounding municipalities because we believe this same suspect has, if he's done it here, he's probably done it elsewhere. And then, you know, thanks to Councilmember Frye because she was able to coordinate this effort. We passed the message along to the community to call 911, we want a record of this. This particular case, the victim did call 911. They had a new call taker working that day who actually told our victim that PG County wouldn't come out and that they wouldn't write a report because it happened 24 hours prior. This new employee was confused, and what it is, is property damage accidents that occur, the police won't come out if you report it more than 24 hours. So that's been corrected. I've communicated with the communication supervisor, and this individual's been corrected. But I got to say, without that quick turnaround, Councilmember Frye calling, advising, and then these officers being immediately directed to the area and surrounding areas, they did great police work all the way around. I mean, to apprehend the suspect without incident and be able to tie him back to several other theft from autos in this town. Matter of fact, there's one of our neighbors right here in the auditorium. And again, being able to coordinate that effort very quickly is, makes all the difference in solving these crimes. So for that, thank you.
The community comes together.
Right. And then I am going to turn it back. Oh, well, real quick, as they mentioned, the numbers for all of the stop sign camera data that they've, our officers in turn have been conducting numerous traffic stops all up and down Chevrolet Avenue and all the cross streets and as a result of this incident occurring. And again, have made over 50 traffic stop citations with all the side streets. And we're just going to keep doing that until the message finally, so they get the hint, stop violating all the stop sign laws and every other law we have in this town. Okay?
I see you.
Oh, you want me to do that? All right. Well, don't worry. I'm sorry. Oh.
That's from Delphine.
Thank you. First, many, many thanks. Many, many thanks to apprehending the, you know, the individual who was spotted on camera. Many thanks to the follow-up. Many, many thanks for that. I just want to get a clarification on which block of Chevrolet Avenue, because I didn't know we had a 2500 block.
Well, that's what they wrote in their report.
29. Oh, Chevrolet, Oak Court. Chevrolet Oak Court.
Why do you put 2519 Chevrolet Avenue?
My apologies.
That's okay.
Councilmember Watson?
Just want to say thank you again for, especially the 50-inch street. Actually, my wife was stopped. She probably killed me, but it shows that, no. I warned her, I told her she was rushing, but it shows the dedication of you all. So thank you, and I laughed at her and said, next time you better stop. So I know she's going to kill me with this, but it shows that y'all are doing your job, and we thank you for it.
Thank you. Okay. I'll go into one more piece before I turn it back over to the chief. Since December 2024, CPD has responded to numerous calls for service for check on the welfare of our senior residents. On two separate occasions, forced entries were carried out, and regrettably, the residents were found deceased. On a separate call for service, a resident had fallen and was trapped inside her home. Recognizing a growing trend in the need to better serve our community, the department proposes the creation of Chevrolet Senior Checks. This initiative would involve officers conducting weekly check-ins with the residents, either in person or via telephone, and developing, maintaining emergency contact information for the closest relatives, doctors, and other pertinent information. We're interested in doing this, and we will be soliciting the assistance of many of the community groups in the town, the mayor and council, and utilizing newsletter to spread the word of this program and best practices. This doesn't just help our seniors in the town. I can't emphasize, my opinion is that it helps our officers. To be able to engage the community, have conversations with our senior members of the community helps our younger officers build better communication skills. And I like the in-person visits more so than the phone visits because I would want to put my eyes on folks and make sure that they're healthy, they're okay, they're eating, they aren't injured. So we're going to emphasize the need for this, and we're going to ask for everybody's help with this. This is going to be a group effort for the town, but I think it's something that needs to be done, so does chief at this point. This is a, we've had a huge uptick in these calls for service, and it's not fun kicking in someone's door to check on them. Either way, whether they're, we're always grateful when they're okay, but it's very difficult to make that decision on when do you do it, when do you not? So this could help in that process. And then I'm going to turn it back over to the chief.
That would conclude the police department's report. Any questions?
Chief, Assistant Chief, I would like to commend you all for the senior checking program. If there is not a welfare check, we have residents that may not have family, and we may not hear from them if there's not a neighbor that knows them. We have had a number of incidents where the person's still alive, but maybe they need medical care or attention. So I think this is wonderful to offer. We have limited resources right now in town for seniors, and so, and not everybody engages with the programs that we do have, so this is really important. Councilmember Versus?
Yeah. Yeah, chief, first of all, thank you and your staff for doing an amazing job. Honestly, I mean, just seeing the Chevrolet police just 24/7 out there definitely brings a sense of safetiness to our, to our community. So thank you again. But actually, I wanted to point out a couple of things. I was reading the part in regards to the NCIC. Is there a reason why there's significant time span from the time that this was sent in, like it's November 1st to now? Like, see that we just, we just received a letter not too long ago, but was there a reason why there's like a major time span from 2023 to now?
Well, first off, a very astute observation, and thanks for the question. Let me just, let me just be very candid. This, this audit was due back in November of 2023. And unfortunately, because of, let's say, a lack of attention to detail by a former employee that ignored the audit requests by the commission, they weren't discovered. The audit deficiency wasn't discovered until after that employee was no longer with the department. And it was discovered as a result of work by Mr. Galloway and I in looking at emails that had been coming in to that employee and discovered the deficiency. So once it was discovered in early April of 2024, I contacted Maryland State Police NCIC unit and informed them that we have discovered this deficiency and asked for their assistance in granting us an extension. Understand that if our NCIC access is shut down, we may as well lock the front door because we've lost all ability to do any criminal investigations. So the state police worked with us. They granted us the extension with Mr. Galloway's approval. We contracted with a subject matter expert to assist us in the process. The deputy chief was not even on the payroll yet and spent four weeks in April working with a subject matter expert to ensure that we covered all of our, that we provided all of the documentation needed to the state police to ensure that the, that we were in compliance with all of the rules and regulations associated with NCIC. Just to give you an example, there are 37 categories. The documentation that was required was substantial to include, and all of this has to be proven. So it's not just submitting a document. We had to have proof of user agreements, that our terminal agency coordinators were trained and certified, that all personal security measures and databases were secured related to SEJIS access, that we had formal written disciplinary policies in place for those individuals that would violate the SEJIS security procedures. There was terminal securities. We had to work with Data Price to map the technology pieces to ensure that the, that the systems, the IT systems, had the security measures in place. And then there were a number of validation areas, as well as logging. All of this dealing with the Interstate Identification Index System, which is a federal criminal history system. So it was a tremendous amount of work. I suspect, and I just got the confirmation from the state police on Monday from the analysts that we had, were in compliance. And so I responded back that we appreciated the patience. I do want to follow up, but I suspect that the response that I'll get is that the delay in the timeframe between the is that the delay in the timeframe between the time that the audit was completed, and again, thanks to the deputy chief, Sergeant White, Sergeant Byler, and Mr. Galloway for all of their efforts. But I suspect that the reason being is that they reviewed those documents in great detail, considering the time delay and the deficiencies that, that had occurred prior to our knowledge. So, um, so the good thing is that we are in compliance and that's where we want to be. So, it's, it's a great question. And in full transparency, that's, that's the reasons why.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate all the work that you and DC put as well as your guys and all staff inside the police department. Thank you again. And, uh, and again, I just want to apologize for not being there during your, uh, sworn in. Just got to work super late. You know, work in DC. So, congratulations again, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. You were here in spirit.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Brayman, do you have a report?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Thank you very much and good evening again. I'd like to touch upon two items. First item, you may recall that when WSSC came and did their briefing on the Task Order 201 remedies, they indicated that they were coming in with a geotech firm to do some evaluations. Those evaluations or the boreings have been over the last two days. There were seven boreings into, uh, seven tests. Probably, there were actually 14 holes drilled, but, um, and so samples were taken from these seven areas. Six of them had a significant amount of clay. And from all the feedback of the people discussing, even WSSC had their PhD geotech out there. I can't come to a conclusion yet, but, um, you know, from, from, uh, what I'm surmising is, is that clay is not an acceptable backfill. Um, I think we already concluded that. I made the comment, it's pretty difficult to dig in Chevrolet without hitting clay. So, uh, yeah, if, if these reports come back supporting that this is not only inadequate, but substantially inadequate, um, we may be even looking to develop our own standard for, for backfilling in, in, in Chevrolet. So, um, one of them, so six had that. The, the one that actually didn't is on Forest Road. You'll notice that when you go down heading the Parkway from Town Hall. And that's where they, we had asked them, or I'd asked them to come in and repatch. I think they dug a little deeper and filled it in with crushed rock, a deeper one than what they normally did. Interesting, I've asked them to include this in the report. The contractor initially reported to the third-party inspector that they backfilled all the trenches with CR6, top to bottom, which is crushed rock. So, I asked them to please note that that comment versus all the clay that they found, um, I don't know. I asked if it, if it could be interpreted as a possibly, um, uh, misleading of an investigation, but we'll, we'll see how that report turns out. But, um, I, uh, I'm hopeful that that report, uh, you know, has WSSC turn on a dime for us with the even more support to have Spinella come in and do what we need to do. The other thing is I wanted to report on, um, the Crestlon Parkway and Parkway Place project was accepted today. So, I thank you, Madam Mayor, for coming out and helping us out with the county TV interview. But the deputy director announced it, that they were accepting the project. We had an inspection afterwards. There's a little tweak that we are going to, uh, work with the county on for the plunge pool, but the county did indicate that I should start the process for submitting for reimbursement. So, we will be submitting for reimbursement for $370,000. And, you know, this project I had tapped, tried to tap into when I first, um, uh, arrived at Chevrolet. I had heard about it previously. Somebody that helps us out, a retired gentleman helps us out a lot with asphalt and concrete, um, has, has, has told me how difficult it is to get into this project. Um, I, I told him we're going to be asking for another project, but I, I do want to note that when we did that tour after the flood in 2020, um, it was, uh, it was a, I think, a very good tour. But, you know, Madam Mayor, if I may, just, just extend my, my thanks to you because I believe you were able to make a connection with one of the managers of the project. And I believe that really helped. Um, many of my colleagues across the county tell me he's a Mr. No, but this actually turned into a Mr. Yes. So, it took us a while. There was a big learning curve, but I'm happy to say that we, we've rounded a corner. We have a touch-up. But for them to say that we could submit for repayment, I thought you all would like, like that part of it. So, um, with that, I will conclude my report and I'm open to questions on those or anything else.
Best report this evening, Mr. Brayman. That means that hopefully we will see $370,000 added back to our budget, which could help, which could help with the number of projects that we've already identified. Councilmember Delica?
Huzzah. Thank you so much for your continued persistence with this. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your persistence and, and support in getting this addressed, fixed, taken care of, and, uh, and the reimbursement pursued. I'm so grateful and so are the residents who have been affected and who have had, and even just sort of downhill where there have been a number of other issues that have been, had to been put off because of this major project. So, I'm very grateful. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Brenner?
I just wanted to commend your staff again. And I would really like to stop meeting Mr. Cardenas in the very early hours of the morning when both of us are knee-deep in water. But I have to say that your staff was amazing on Monday in response to the water main break. It was a bigger-than-usual water main break and impacted a lot of folks. And Chevrolet Police as well responded and it was a team effort, but it was the best possible response to a really terrible situation. And I feel like everyone feels like they've been heard and they're getting their issues resolved. So, thank you.
If I may, just add to that. One of the things that I was told, because I toured the, um, that area with another WSSC rep that had come out for the, the boring, if people have yard issues of, you know, where the sediment, I know some of them had in the houses, they should actually contact WSSC about asking for some landscaping help as well. So, um, I, I, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to, to hear that, but I wanted to promote that as well.
Yeah. I sent Mr. Galloway, who sent to Mr. Wilkins, a list of all the houses that had either water in the house or damage to their property in some way in terms of landscaping. So, um, but I also sent an email telling them that if they haven't heard from Mr. Wilkins, that they should call the number. So, hopefully that will get a result. But thank you.
Okay. I will once again just echo my thank yous for the Crestlon Parkway project. Many people do not realize how long we have been working on that. It is approximately three years. And getting the approval today is astonishing and wonderful. What that means, in case you're not familiar with the MSDAP program, is that Chevrolet is no longer responsible for both of these. The county is now responsible for them, which is wonderful because it means we don't have to use our resources to maintain these any longer. So, once again, many, many thanks to you, Mr. Brayman. With that, if there's nothing further, council, we've got a march work session. Councilmember Frye? Wade? I don't know who had their hand up first, sorry.
Just to follow with 5600 Newton Street project.
The, the public hearing for the stop sign cameras, do we need to pick a date prior to that or talk about when we want to have the date that during the meeting?
All right. Newton. Councilwoman Watson?
Hi. We're going to have a vote on Crest and I'm going to encourage the residents to come again, particularly those that had a, um, problem with the, or are concerned about the specific location.
And you are copied on the, the email that came in?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Brenner?
This may not be for the march work session, but based on our conversations today, I do have a draft resolution to set up a committee for reviewing surveillance and other civil rights issues. And so, I can circulate that. And if there's time in the march work session, we can talk about it.
Quick work. Thank you very much, Councilmember Brenner. Councilmember Garcia?
Yeah, I already know what I'm about to say. A possible update on the pathway. I know we just submitted a grant, which I want to see if I'll get a possible update on that, on that beautiful pathway that might be, or definitely should be built. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Delica?
Thank you. I think we're, um, I think we all, we are going to hear from the, um, an update from the Board of Elections. I also think that we should, um, put a plug in to, to remind folks for the 16-year-old, vote 16, 16 and 17-year-olds. I don't know if we're going to be receiving any recommendations of, um, you know, of publicizing that or, or any, any materials, any, any, um, any educational things that we need to make folks aware of. But I think we should at least put some attention to that, even if it's, if it's receiving recommendations from the Board of Elections, if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Galloway, did you have something?
I just want to review this with mayor and council real quick. So, we have 5600 Newton Street. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Eli Building updates from Keller. Speed humps on Crest. 5600 Newton Street. And that's if we get the information back in time, correct? Councilmember? Is this for the power source?
No.
No, no, the, the house. 5600 Newton Street.
Correct. Okay.
We can put the power source in there too, the 58 and, uh, place. That's 58 Place.
If we have, if we have the information before the next town meeting, well, if we have the information for the next work session, we'll include that. Okay. Got it. Um, public hearing for stop sign cameras, that will be a discussion, resolution to set up committee for surveillance. Kilmer Park pathway, Board of Elections update. Anything else?
That sounds pretty robust to me, Mr. Galloway.
We can also add the crisis response, no, not crisis response, but Office of Human Rights.
All right. Thank you. I believe the reason why we didn't move forward with the, the meeting last time for the variants is the builder themselves said that they were going to be gone out of the country for about 30 days. So, if we can make sure the builder will be present to answer questions, that would be really important.
I'll work with Councilmember Wade on contacting the builder and the owner to ensure that they will be available. I'm to, I am supposed to provide a recommendation on this matter as well. So, you will be receiving a recommendation from me that evening as well.
Great. All right.
Thank you.
Well, if nothing further, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do we have announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm skipping over my, my, your announcement. Do we have announcements?
I am.
Councilmember Garcia?
Just want to say a couple of things. Um, just want to thank again chief and the chief across for, for everything you guys put in the work, man. I know sometimes I, you know, a lot of things get, sometimes get difficult out there. I mean, I just seen your guys out there just back and forth, going up and down that land over, uh, the 202. Gets a little crazy sometimes, but thank you again for all the patience you have for our community as well as for your guys and the time for, that you have for us. I know sometimes it's not easy, uh, asking for, uh, for things, you know, just with the thought of, you know, might shut down or not, but you know, just know that, you know, you guys do an incredible job. Thank you again. Um, I know you guys have helped a lot of my residents, Ward 5 personally on a one-on-one basis. And it's not every day that you hear that the chief or deputy chief goes out there themselves and they speak to the residents themselves. And honestly, they, they feel the, they feel the gratitude and they feel like appreciated and actually heard and seen. And thank you again for that. That, you know, that means a lot to me, especially at my ward. Also, I want to thank town staff. Ms. Giselle, thank you for doing an amazing job. You know, you've been top of things. I don't know how much your workload is in here, but I know, I know you guys have been killing it. And I just want to personally thank you, um, yourself for everything you've done. Uh, Mr. Galloway, thank you again as well for everything. And, uh, Mr. Brayman, you and public works have been done. Been doing an amazing job. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Frye.
So, I'm going to second everything that Councilmember Garcia just said, because I don't know that we, I think we thank you all the time, but I think part of it is because y'all are doing so much work and it's day in, day out, and it's extinguishing the little fires that none of us even hear about. So, I second that. Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Um, I want to address something just because something came up earlier. It actually might be the only thing said tonight that could be a conflict of interest. However, I don't just play an attorney on TV. I'm an attorney in real life. And I think I can say this about the Chevrolet Boys and Girls Club and my husband who is on the board, as well as the other board members. They had a follow-up to a interview that they did during last season where one of our teams, which is predominantly deaf players, were interviewed by a couple of our news agencies. And tonight, earlier this evening, that second part of that where they did a follow-up is on WUSA9. So, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge not just my husband, Luann Smith, Joe Ruddy III, Dustin Fisher, Jason Anusi, our coaches, including Councilmember Wade, and others who just kind of really pour so much into this program that has gotten to the point where they need to use other facilities because they don't have enough space here. And really pouring into our kids of every ability, of every financial background, of every demographic and pulling them in.
Can you pull the microphone away from you just a bit? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, I wanted to make that acknowledgement. Um, thank you, district chief, deputy chief, and also some of our residents. I'm glad what happened happened the other day in the way that it did, when it guards to the rummaging in the car, just because knowing that sometimes misinformation unintentionally or intentionally can be delivered. So, it's really important for our residents, even though nothing may have been taken from their vehicle or it was just a little bit here and there, take the time to report it. And if not, uh, being given the opportunity to report, to reach out to someone in town so that we can make sure that we know it's happening because that data is very important. And it gives our officers the ability to do their jobs and to keep us safe and to deal with these issues. So, thank you for being prompt. Thank you for our residents for just being communicative and taking the time. I want to also say thank you for the senior checks. Just going door-to-door and talking to people. There are so many seniors in our, especially in my ward, um, who don't always feel like people are checking in on them, don't feel like there are programs in this town that are offered for them. And so, really finding ways to engage with them, I think is important. And this is just one way. So, I think it's a great idea and I'm happy to help as much as I possibly can. And then I wanted to say, chief, welcome. I mean, you've been here, but welcome. I'm glad that we got to do this. I'm glad that deputy chief got to make us cupcakes. They are delicious. So, anytime we can celebrate you, our team, our staff, especially with cupcakes, I'm here for it. But I'm very grateful that you're here and I really appreciate everything you guys have done. And then lastly, I just want to say happy Women's History Month, especially to the women up here, our staff, our team. In a time right now when women are getting attacked all the time just for being women, I think it's really important that we take the time to encourage each other and to be there for one another and to acknowledge when there are good and bad things happening. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Councilmember Brenner?
I'm not going to repeat everything these two just said, but I agree with all of it. You all know how I appreciate brevity. You all know how I appreciate brevity. But again, thank you to everyone who responded to the water main break. That was really rough, and it was great to see all of staff, and I just completely forgot what I was going to say. I don't know, I just feel like listening to Councilmember Garses and Councilmember Frye, there is so much good that is happening in this town right now, which is remarkable considering everything that is happening right outside of town. So I wanted to remind everyone again that things are rough, things are going to get rougher, and the more that we can hold on to all of this positive stuff that is happening within town and take care of each other, like the senior checks, the better off we'll be. So thank you, everyone, for being wonderful and for being a wonderful community.
Councilmember Delacre?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And slightly tangential, but sort of on the heels of what Councilmember Briner just said, today is Purim. It is the, for those who don't know, it's sort of the celebration or the commemoration of Queen Esther from the Book of Esther, and how she used her position to protect her people. And I think that's a very good reminder, I'm not Jewish, but I think that it also serves as a good reminder to all of us, to be able to intervene for those who need it. So Happy Purim to all who celebrate. I also would like to, I'm sorry to impose, if Vice Mayor Frye would be able to repeat the portion about the, sort of, the deaf baseball players, because I think that ironically, that there was a sound issue for the interpreter right as you were talking about the deaf players. So I just want to make sure that that gets interpreted properly.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Delacre. I was probably just too excited about it. Slowly, over the past few years, the Chevrolet Boys and Girls Club have had more deaf families participating in basketball, to the extent where they realized, one, they needed to get an interpreter, and then they were able to, I think we have at least two teams that are majority deaf, so we have our interpreters who come, and the coaches typically are not, and they do not, they're slowly picking up some of the sign language, but the club has made it a priority to make sure to be able to bring in the translators, the interpreters, and to be able to make sure that the teams are playing in a way that accommodates the interpreter schedule, things along those lines. And it's just been, it's been really amazing to watch, especially when you see the other kids who have the ability to hear, and they get to interact and play with other kids who do not, and just how they accommodate and they collaborate. So it is very encouraging to see and to watch. So there are a couple of games still left in the next week and a half, I believe, so if you can come out to watch them, I highly encourage that you do. It does get a little rowdy in here. Councilmember Wade, Coach Wade could attest to that, but we try to keep it calm and fun since it's, you know, all neighbors and friends.
Councilmember Wade?
Since we're piggybacking off of that, I'm going to mention again, the playoffs are this weekend. My son is in the playoffs, but also the comment regarding the deaf teens, just want to, again, congratulate Larry Frye and the entire staff. I actually coach against those players, to see my four and seven-year-old, who are cognitive at that age. As a person who plays sports, I never would imagine that, playing with peers who are, unfortunately, who are deaf or hard of hearing. And also to thank the individuals that are actually on the floor, helping them out, to come out. So it's something that's truly amazing for that to happen. Also, just a reminder that people are losing their jobs, so just make sure our neighbors, make sure you check on them. In my daytime capacity, I would say this every single time, I have access to various social services. If you need help with food distributions, clothing, anything of that nature, please don't hesitate to reach out to me regarding that, but definitely check on our neighbors and their family members. Thank you very much.
All right. Great. If nothing further, I have a few.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
One, I cannot say thank you enough to Chief for being willing to join us. We got Chief out of retirement, and he could have said no. I'm sure he thought it many times. But my thank you is not just for you coming, it is for you going above and beyond, even as an interim chief. When you came here, we had four officers. We are now fully staffed. That is incredible, period. And we are not just fully staffed with bodies, we are fully staffed with good cops, which is remarkable and unheard of today, so I'm very grateful for that. Also, thank you for Deputy Chief. We didn't just hire a Deputy Chief, but we hired somebody who has ideas about how to make our little Chevrolet Police Department a beacon for the rest of the United States, and I'm really, really proud of that. So many, many thanks to you. There is a Fourth Ward Civic Association meeting, it is on the 17th. Even though it's St. Patrick's Day, it's a holiday, I think we're still having the meeting. And if you have not seen, I learned a lot from having an actual designated time for Mayor's Hour. I try to be available to people as much as possible, so people have been able to schedule appointments with me. Instead of just having one hour, I meet with folks, but I had a designated Mayor's Hour last month, and for some folks, that worked better for them than trying to figure out when to actually have it scheduled. So there's another Mayor's Hour, which is on the 21st. It's actually two hours, so if you just want to stop by and chat, feel free. We had muffins last time. There are a lot left over, though they're very good muffins, so I'll probably have something else to eat instead of muffins. And that same evening--
Hey, Mayor, can you pull your microphone back from your mouth? Thank you.
Does that work better?
Yes.
Okay. That same evening, I am having art therapy for federal government workers. If you are not a federal government worker, you're welcome to come, but it's specifically to support folks in town. Just, sort of, just take an hour to debrief. I'm trying to find massage therapists that will come use the chair. I'm not promising that by next week, because I can't get anybody to confirm, but you will have artwork that you can, you know, take with you, so. And then really, really important is the State of Chevrolet address on the 24th. We, I've done this now for the last three years. It highlights the strengths of Chevrolet as well as the opportunities for growth. And the first half hour is in English, the second half hour is in very bad Spanish, but I'm told that people appreciate it. So I would ask for you to tune in or come in person, so that you can hear about what's actually going on in your town. All right? Is there anything further from mayor and council? Okay. If not, I will now entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. You all have a good night.
Good night.